All righty. We'll go ahead and get started to a call of meeting ordered at seven oh seven P M. Quorum is present, all members present minus Vicki Cooper. And we'll start with the pledge of allegiance and invitation.
Pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, to the republic which stands in our nation, under God, with liberty and justice for all.
Father God, we just thank you for allowing us to join tonight. Father, we just have to keep us on task in the deliberate city business. And Father, we ask that you be with our friend Vicki Cooper, she's not feeling well this evening. With her well and over her sickness. As you remain in prayer, amen. Uh, no citizens communication, nobody signed up? No boards and commissions? Uh, no consent agenda? Second meeting of the month, no consent agenda? And we do have a public hearing ordinance, item number one, a public hearing of variance, special exception required for the Bell County appraisal district property I B one five two seven four dash S one one zero seven B eight dash Bartlett's fourth addition dash block zero two eight, lot part three acres zero point zero six four three, also known as one ninety eight East Reef Rich Brown Street in the city of Bartlett, Texas, to review and consider an R two duplex and an apartment zoning area regulation variance. I've got the, um... I want to pop this up on the screen real quick. And I believe these owners are, are y'all here? I'll give a quick summary and then we can open up the floor for you. So we'll start this, uh, public hearing at seven oh nine P M. Seven oh nine. Oh. Okay, so the, the property, uh, under discussion today is, uh, one ninety eight Rich Brown Street, that's this parcel right here, this is Bell County, that's housing. And I'll show you the street view as well. And I believe, is it, uh, is it this lot right here? Okay, so it's right in this area, right off Rich Brown. That's, uh, E V Street, right here, E V. In your, uh, in your packet here, I don't have an exact page number on it, but, uh, it's one, two, it's the third page. You'll see a summary of, of why a variance was requested by the applicant. It's, uh, it's an email, it's got some yellow tint to it. So in this particular zone, um, the zoning area requirements require a minimum lot size of seven thousand five hundred square feet, that's a seventy-five by one hundred, a minimum ground floor area of thirteen hundred square feet, a rear setback of greater than twenty percent of depth, which equals eight feet approximately, a front setback greater of twenty-five feet, and a side setback greater than ten percent of a width. But the existing, what currently existing and being proposed is a lot size of two thousand eight hundred square feet, a ground floor area of one thousand two hundred and thirty square feet, a rear setback of six feet, a front setback of six feet, and a side setback of eighteen feet on the west side and seven feet on the east side. Um, so what that, when you compare the two, what you're missing is forty-seven hundred of square feet, uh, does not be the minimum lot size. It's seventy square feet short of the minimum ground floor area requirement. It is two feet short of the rear setback requirement, and it is nineteen feet short of the front setback requirement. With that said, I'll open up the floor. Is there anything in particular of this property that presents itself as a unique circumstance that would warrant, uh, special consideration for variance or special exception?
They're trying to purchase a lot behind it that they can give a hold of the previous owners. So that way we maybe, uh, ran more square footage and stuff, or we'd already talked to the county. It just depends on maybe the owners of previous owners.
This one here?
Oh, she, yes, she's...
I see.
Which one? The ones directly behind.
That one. And I noticed, um, there's a bit of, uh, it's like some overlap, maybe a neighboring property or...
Yeah, that neighbor, he's got his carport on our side, and also the neighbor on the left side, his fence is over about five, six feet.
I believe you had a survey of the property?
Yes, sir.
Mayor, council, if you recall, anytime you're, you're considering a variance or special exception to existing zoning criteria, it has to present itself as a unique, um, burden, hardship circumstance. If you recall, the one that we spent a lot of time on was on Kimball Street where there was a, a city street running right through it. That was pretty unique to that one property. This property here, though, it is a smaller parcel. There aren't any unique geographic or otherwise, um, specific items tied to this, this piece of property. However, with that said, this is a very, very common issue around town. There, there were lots that were, were replatted that do not meet the minimum requirements for the zoning ordinances, and so we've been running to this issue quite a bit when it comes to permitting and having these lots developed. So if there was a recommendation, it would be that not to permit a variance for this specific property, however, to revisit this on a more comprehensive, uh, scale and to figure out and work on a solution or, or policy that could apply to not just this property, but to all properties that do not meet a minimum square foot requirement or the, any other, uh, variance requirements that have been set forth. But with that being said, are there any questions, thoughts, concerns from city council?
Could the setback be based off of actual usage of this place or actually property?
Property owner.
So in order to do...
And the survey is in the...
So in order to change the lot square footage size, because that, that, this is like to start a foot one of each single lesson, and obviously, I mean, you want it to be built and found. So to change those square, I mean, to change, because I don't know when this was plotted, plotted compared to when the ordinance was adopted. But if it's like, in my opinion, if it's pre, pre ordinance, then when they did the ordinance, they kind of messed these people over, but only smaller lots. So how do you, how do you change? Because you have a zone, instead of having spots in your zone that have a different square footage requirement, how do you, how, how do you amend that? That's what I'm asking is, how do you amend? Because now you're gonna have spots inside your residential R two zone or whatever it is, uh, that are less square footage required due to lot size.
Exactly, yes, sir. So, so as Mayor mentioned, here, here's the property right here, it's sort of, it's kind of hard to see, but it's this lighter red. So if you were to amend every requirement that was requested, the minimum ground floor area and the lot size, you made that amendment to the zoning ordinance itself, then now that applies to every single property that is zoned in that red. So that's why we're talking about, it's gonna take a holistic approach to figure that out. It's either one, what you do for one property in that regard or you do for all properties in that zone.
That would be based off of the actual lot size, wouldn't it? And then the size of the lot, I mean, with that, that would affect something that's possible with the R two, right?
If the lot is large enough, if it does meet the requirements, it, it wouldn't affect what it's already meeting. It would just basically lower the threshold to incorporate those that don't currently meet it, if that makes sense. And the other, the other challenge, if a variance is approved, is that it's setting precedent so that any, anybody else that doesn't meet some of these for a non-specific or unique circumstance, now they can come and present a case to city council and the precedent has been established that it's just, you didn't meet the requirements, but not because of a unique circumstance. And so at that point, you're, you're sort of circumventing the purpose of a zoning regulation and zoning ordinance.
When you go out there and have a cert, a survey of that lot with somebody else in the property, you're already going to do it. Trying to sell it or whatever.
So, just curious, since this is an R two zone, correct?
Yes, sir.
And that has these certain requirements, but the lot is smaller than what the certain requirements are, what can they do with that lot? I mean, if, if the council's like hardcore to know, no variance, I mean, is it just grow grass and put a birdhouse on it?
That's, well, that's one thing that we can discuss with city attorney to figure out what our options are, not just at a policy level, but maybe at this unique circumstance as well. But, uh, that's, that's why they mentioned trying to procure that secondary parcel right behind it so you can combine...
Well, it makes sense because that one's landlocked, I mean, you know, I mean, if they put a house or something on theirs, and then the two parcels directly behind there, completely landlocked, there's no access.
I'm sorry?
You want to highlight, is somebody's carport on there?
Yes, sir, you see it right here.
It's like saying the carport, it's standing on the, yes, on the other side.
That belongs to the house there though, right?
Right. This, uh... You said this carport belongs to this property here?
Right.
Looks like it's on another property too.
That's a shadow on another property, I believe.
Yeah, and right on the property, yeah.
You're right, that is landlocked, so that, that would present some challenges.
Well, that one, I guess, in the, above it's a wrong lot.
Well, the other smaller lots, they really discussed, uh, adjusting the back sets on it, uh, for those smaller lots, but this one, they would lock the back sets so we would work, rather than walk.
Pretty stern, pretty stern. Like I said, thi- this is gonna take a, a lot more comprehensive discussion for, to figure out a, a wholesale solution or policy change, and it's gonna take coordinating with city attorney, and, uh, our city engineer's office is actually, they have a planner on staff now, so I'm sure that can be a pretty key resource in helping us figure out how to, uh, solve some of these challenges.
I mean, if you just look at this, like, one picture, you have one here, you're seeing, like, cover six hundred lots of the same, that are undeveloped that could be potentially issued in the future also, like, you got some over here on this, on the front street.
The problem itself of the smaller lots is not unique, it's, it's, it's pretty common, which is why it's gonna take a bigger solution.
Are you addressing all the zones in that pink red color and re, rezone those areas to something different so that it affects everything? On a smaller lot?
Potentially, potentially, you have to be real careful not to spot zone within it, that's why I say it's gonna take a lot more... Any other thoughts, considerations? And so this is, this house that you have pictures of here, is this what you're at, you're wanting to build or move to the property?
If they're raw, then what you can do is, you gotta, we're gonna have to get the neighbor to move it. It's just a carport, and then, oh, that's a new carport, just. You can put it back there after I... Well, the owners, if we move it now, we're probably... The owner can take, move it whenever we need.
No, this is what they're proposing, but, okay. So this house is twelve hundred and some odd square feet?
Right. It's been, uh, leaning your water from the inside, every window's open outward.
So it's what we're looking at here, guys, is, is you got an extremely small lot, and the current city ordinance has all these requirements where the square footage requirements for one, y'all wouldn't even re, reach the square footage requirements on the lot itself for the house that you want to bring in. It's, it's pretty, it's, it's close, was it seventy foot, square foot? That's not very good.
Right.
So, but the problem is the setback lines for the property, so in between houses, in other words, so like, if you're here, you know, and our, our requirements, you have to be so far away from the street one way, and so far away from the back one way, and so far from this way, so far from that way, and that's where your house has got to sit inside that perimeter. Now, your house is gonna be way bigger than, than what's there, and so it's gonna expand out on the setback lines, and, and so that's why the variance question comes in and, and you're asking for a variance. But for us to, for us to approve a variance, there has to be like a special circumstance. I mean, the city council can do it, but if we do it for one, if we do it for you guys, then anybody and everybody that comes in here, we have to do the same thing for. That's what he's saying about it, we're setting a precedent. So if you do for one, you have to do for all. Uh, and so if that, when you get to that point, it's like, what's the point of the zones? You don't, you know, you understand what we're saying? What's the point of the zoning ordinance at that point? You're basically just thrown away, I mean, because you just allow whatever. But a special exception, you know, and that's what variances really are, for special exceptions. Like you was mentioning, we have a, we have a house, or a piece of property across town, and for the longest time, um, there's been a city street going through this piece of property. Well, nobody even knew that that was, uh, not a city street until a gentleman came in a couple years ago, bought it, and he wanted to put a piece of, uh, a house or something on it, so he had a survey done after he bought it, and he comes back and he winds up, the city street's running right through the middle of his property. And so for us to allow him to build on that piece of property, because now his piece of pro, he's not getting the street back as property, we kind of have the street there because we already have, you know, residence. So that's the special exception rule, you know what I'm saying? There's, there's like a, there's like a special reason why he's getting a variance, is because we're not giving up the street and, you know, it's technically his property. So we're get, we're allowed him to ha, uh, you know, kind of impede a little bit on the setback lines and maybe have a different sized, uh, house than what the zoning had required, only because it's a special, special exce, exception. And so that's, that's, that's this, you know, like, your piece of property's just a square piece of property, no streets running through it, no easements, nothing like that besides the neighbor impeding on your property. So, I mean, the council, we want to, we want to kind of study this a little bit longer, talk to our city attorney, find out what, what our options are, um, as a council, as a city, because if you're looking at the ma, at this, at this drawing here, you can clearly see, you know, you got neighboring properties in the same little two-block radius of where you're at that are gonna run into the same situation. We've had it over here on the other side of town, we've had it on that side of town, we've got it over there where you're at. And so what we're saying is, we need to go back to our city attorney and look at maybe amending our, 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 our two zoning ordinance requirements rather than just giving that variance for one property. And, and either way we go, it's basically gonna affect the entire R two zone, but we just gotta find out how to do it, how to do it right, and make it make sense. And so that, my, my suggestion is to allow the council to, to, uh, consult with, uh, city attorney and, uh, and kind of, uh, go from here and, and find out, you know, get their, their, uh, their thoughts on it, you know, maybe their recommendations on it. And, I mean, obviously, the, the council, we can do whatever we want, the, the city attorney's just gonna give us some, uh, recommendations basically, and so advice. And so, um, unless you have something else that you want to say, I mean, or if council, y'all have any questions for them, the owners right out here, or if anybody in the audience has anything to say, you're welcome to speak up, this is a public hearing, so... Any other questions, Philip, Dale, Shelton?
Do you own that lot, I'm, yeah, yeah.
I said, uh, previous owner passed away, and it's...
And even then, if they, if they do acquire that piece behind them, they ha, they'll have to join them, you know, to make it, you know, which is, which is, makes sense, but we're gonna be able to do it on...
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah, they can give, there's no access to it.
You charge them a toll, right? Come through the living room, through the back bedroom. Yeah, that's kind of a, I, I mean, I, I, we, we understand what you're asking, we totally, we totally get it, but we just gotta, as a, as a, as a city, uh, we, you know, we can't just throw a dart at the board, we gotta make sure that we get it right, you know what I'm saying? But, I mean, it is crazy. All right, that's, that's one of our many challenges, people, I mean, just like you got, you know, your neighbor impeding on your property, that's all over town. We've got houses built on three different properties on the other side of town. I don't know how to fix that, and no clue. Anything else? Y'all have anything else you want to close with or anything? We'll, 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 we'll keep working on it, and, uh, we'll, we'll consult with city attorney, and then, uh, we'll, uh, we'll get back to you in the, in the very near future. Okay?
Buy that or buy it.
Buy that or buy it. Can they, uh, what, what do they call that? Squad on it? Is squatted, squatters rights?
Yeah, they told us six statements to figure anything.
And you've been talking with the county?
Yes, sir.
Bell County?
If that doesn't work, we'll have another lot on Kimball or Downhill Street for...
Have a city street running through it? Kimball and Alamo, please. Kimball and Alamo, which one's in there? Further down, I think.
Oh, on Kimball and Alamo.
Yeah, I was gonna say Kimball and Alamo, I don't, I don't think they've joined anywhere, is it? Elmen and Alamo.
Yeah, it's, rather than border, maybe not.
Yeah, that, that's, that's how it's word. Uh, I think, I don't know. Okay, so you have a backup plan just in case?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right. Well, guys, we appreciate it, and I wish we had easy answers for you, but unfortunately we don't, so let us, let us...
Yeah.
It is tough. It is tough because we see, we see the same problem in other, other parts of town and other parcels of town, so, I mean, somewhere definitely need to get, get rectified, so. Let us do a little work on it, okay? But, uh, also keep, you know, you might want to start aiming towards the other one, because this may take a little while to get, get figured out. I don't know what kind of time crunch you're on moving your house and stuff like that, but we'll just have to, we'll have to look at that. Okay? All righty, guys, thank you. Any, any other comments? We'll close this public hearing. We'll close it at seven thirty P M. All right, hey, Mr. Swaki, or Chief, you not hitting the light one time for me? Thank you, that's good. Item number two, I, I, I can't see in the dark. Item number two, discuss with you and take any necessary action related to the ordinance two zero two three zero six two six dash zero two.
Thank you.
Thank y'all. Adopting Plan Development District Zoning Amendment. Did we need recess to get this off the printer?
Yes, I'm gonna grab that off.
It's just two minutes, we're gonna grab this off the printer real fast. Sorry.
All right. Do you, do you want to remind them what this is about?
The P D D? P D D's the, the public hearing we had last meeting, uh, where we had all the people here asking questions. So it's, it's about the overlay for the zoning for, uh, properties outside the city limits that would be, uh, developed or even inside the city limits, um, that would go to like a public, uh, a P D D, um, which is the way the thing is financed, I believe, so. In other words, city, properties outside the city limits right now have those zones because they're not the city limits. So if we, if they annex into the city limits, this would be the, the creating the or, the, the zoning ordinance for those properties. It's the way I understand it. And I don't understand everything fully, but that's the best I could, that's the best I can tell. So Justin's gonna grab that off the printer real fast, and, uh... Any questions on it? After last week, uh, last meetings? Discussions? Think there was a lot of confusion in the, in the audience in the last meeting? We gave our, we gave our best. Robert, you know you had a fire on your property the other night?
Which uh, which property?
The Bartley Farms.
Were they um, somebody burning something?
No, the uh co-op line fell in the middle of the night. And all them hay bales out there.
What's that?
You know all them hay bales they had out there?
Yeah. Really?
They were all on fire.
Did uh, did anybody let the farmer know?
Sorry?
Anybody let the farmer know?
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. Uh, Scott was there. He was, he, he's one of the volunteer farmers. So he, he, he was.
Everybody say it?
Oh, yeah. It happened, uh, it's at night, we had that we had that, that heat burst. It was like, it, I walked, because my neighbor called, we had like this wind come through town and the power flickered. And so my neighbor, she just got home from the hospital and her breathing machine went off and the power flickered. So she called me and I had to go over there and turn on her thing. But I walked outside, it was like walking into an oven. It was like a hundred and five degrees at, at one thirty A M, you know, I mean, it was, it was crazy. And so then I, when I got home, then I got the notification about the fire. And so I was, we drove around forever looking for it and finally found it out in the middle of your property.
So what you're seeing, what you'll see in your packet, this was said, this is a revised draft sent to us uh from Patty Akers, city attorney. And the last few pieces that she needed to add to it were the acreage minimum requirements. And she added a minimum acreage of one hundred and a minimum uh for a first phase of fifty acres. She said the acreage minimum is just a suggestion and city council can raise or lower the acreage minimums um as needed or as necessary. But she did advise that uh a minimum should be required for P D D ordinance. Any questions, thoughts, concerns on? It's, it's essentially the same ordinance that was discussed during the hearing again, but the only pieces that were added were the acreage minimums. It is on page four of twelve. Subparagraph I.
There it is.
So we, so we talked about um in order for this to apply, this is a new, it's an amendment to the city's existing zoning ordinances. Um, so that includes existing property within the city limit. I'm not aware of really any property that's minimum a hundred acres where this P D D ordinance zoning overlay would apply. So this would typically apply to uh properties that are looking to voluntarily annex into the city limits and develop either mixed use residential, commercial, or something to that effect. A master plan can be, is where this really applies to. Now, one thing to keep in mind is we can, council, you can choose to keep the language that the city attorney has added in here as a recommendation. Um, and if at any point in the future that needs to be amended to maybe fit a more appropriate size, it can certainly be done. But for the purpose of, of this, tonight's ordinance, that is the city attorney's recommendation.
You know how big Phase One is? I can pull it up if you could.
Great question.
I can pull it up.
I know the entire Phase One and Phase Two is a hundred and three acres. So.
I would think if Phase One might be smaller.
Phase One might be maybe forty acres.
So you don't want to amend it without the data.
So what I'm seeing here, it's a minimum of that hundred acres. Let's say Phase One of that hundred acres is sixty acres. And we can't do anything else. We have a photograph. It's going to be a hundred acres developed in Phase One.
No, sir, it's uh, Phase One development would be minimum fifty acres. But the entire development as it's proposed, it needs to be at least a hundred acres. I guess it's almost implied because if you have a fifty minimum and then if you even had a second phase, there's a hundred minimum. So there's, there's no other way for that second phase to be anything but fifty acres. So it's um, so that way if it's like a two hundred acre development, the minimum in any phase has to be fifty. But the total minimum period is a hundred acres. So if you have one, you can only have two phases at that point. Phase one is fifty acres, Phase two fifty acres.
How big is that Phase One?
Do you know what I'm gonna be creating?
Uh, yeah, I don't see one either. Would it be uh of interest to city council to amend that minimum slightly?
I would think you would want to
So again, the city attorney, Patty Akers, she did mention that uh council, you, you can lower or raise the, the minimum requirement. But at minimum, she said to have a minimum. So to at least keep it in there, but you can adjust the number to ask.
But if you did say, you know, minimum, say, minimum phase requirements, twenty five, twenty five acres minimum. So the total fifty acres. Twenty thousand.
I mean, this way they could do a fifty acre development. Minimum fifty acre development, I mean. That's a twenty five acres upfront and twenty five Phase Two.
It'd be all one phase, just fifty acres. We're gonna cut that in half, twenty five and fifty? Council proposing.
Of having a minimum. I think having a minimum, if you didn't have this, you could have a smaller property owner. Like if you recall that uh, that gentleman who wanted to build a two D, two sets of duplexes off of uh Jackson Street. Then, then P D D, he could request a P D D zoning overlay. And but he didn't, if it didn't have the minimum, he could apply it. But if there is a minimum, he can not apply it. So this would only be really applicable to larger, to the master plan community.
Any other discussion? Any motions? This can always be.
No. It, the motion could be to uh approve the ordinance as amended to include the revised acreage minimum.
Philip Weaver has made a motion. Which one is it? Gail seconds? All in favor? Motion carries four to zero. Uh, Mr. Jones? All right, moving on. Out of number three, discuss, review and take any necessary action related to the P H I medical airlift agreement. She's not here, probably because I didn't notify her to tell her to be here, but my fault. Uh, wait, this is the air medical helicopter agreement. Uh, we've finally got some numbers here. We've turned in all of our rosters. Uh, as long as you guys would approve this. Um, y'all remember what this is? Were, were you aware of what this is? Okay. Didn't remember when we talked about it. But this is the air ambulance service for City of Bartley residents. And it would start on, I believe, July first. Yeah, first day of July twenty twenty three and run through June thirty, twenty twenty four. At a cost to the city of five thousand two hundred and twenty nine dollars.
If you recall as well, um, this was part of the fire department's budget. Because they were the ones who initially proposed this to the uh, to the city. Uh, so they were, are required to find a requisite uh reduction in their budget to accommodate this cost in this fiscal year. There is an offsetting component to it.
So it's a five thousand two hundred and twenty nine dollars.
Now, you could do um Kenny each, that's the, the lady who came to speak at, at council at previous meeting. Um, she sent this over, I believe, Thursday or Friday. So the city attorney didn't have time for a full comprehensive review. Um, but this is a pretty common agreement. A lot of municipalities are, are joining um this service. So there's a couple of items that can be done. One can just be to approve the agreement as presented, or one could be to authorize the mayor to execute the agreement pending um final legal review.
Fire department uh would make the call. Um, he ordered a helicopter. I mean, you can't order it over the phone when you're calling nine one one, same. I'm having chest pains. Send, send the, send the bird. The, the fire department have to respond and then order. There's certain calls, though, that they auto dispatch. So they'll start like actually prepping the, prepping the helicopter and getting in the, you know, start getting in the air, start even heading this direction. And if fire department calls them off, they just turn around and go back to base. But if they, you know, so there's certain auto, auto dispatch uh severity calls, I guess she said. So. Our, our, well, the fire department that comes and responds, which we hope it'd be Bartley Fire Department, but I mean, we have mutual aid with, with Holland and Granger, even Salado and
And Holland does have this service as well.
Holland is. I think they went active last month.
So this was also in response to um citizens concerned about ambulance response times um in the event of an extreme medical emergency that, and this is just another, as uh the fire department described it, a tool in the tool belt. It's just another tool that they're just holding.
They're gonna call P H I anyways if they need them. They're gonna call them. It's, it's just, this is basically, City of Bartley residents would have a, a membership that the city is paying for through the fire department budget. Is paying for, which would cover their costs if they do not have insurance for air transport. So rather than the, the resident getting a twenty five, thirty thousand dollar bill in the mail. Boom, they've got this little seven dollar membership card the city paid for. Now they're covered. They don't even get the bill in the mail. So it's kind of a, we're in the middle of nowhere. We're, you know, in between two different counties. Uh, we're, you know, sometimes in our transport, you know, just to get an ambulance here from Scotland White and probably just as bad from uh St. David's. Okay, she's gonna do a press release once they get their signed contract back. They'll do a press release. Uh, we'll, we'll blast it out over all the Facebook, uh, social media, city website. And they'll actually get uh cards in the mail. And the card's good for the, the whole residence. This includes seven hundred and fifty membership cards.
The website's gonna be big ones.
And so, and also, also uh, I've heard, go ahead and add the city employees, now the city employees that reside outside the city limits are covered, are covered by residents. But the city employees from outside the city limits that drive here every day would be covered also. They'll get their membership covered. Like Ms. Brenda, she lives in Holland. And so she would be covered, or outside of Holland. Uh, and, and both of our chief and, and also Spocky, they'd be covered. They live outside the city limits. All of our line will live outside the city limits. All of, you know, I mean, that way if, if, if there's, you know, they get injured at work somehow, some way, um, then we would train with them. No question.
Yes, sir. This would be in their budget and they would have to identify um the requisite reduction to accommodate. So it's a zero sum amendment, basically. So if, if approved, um, again, there were the two options, either council can approve it as proposed or ask the mayor to execute the agreement pending final legal review. But um the two next steps would be preparing for the press release and the website, Facebook, how do we get the information out? And also the fire department would begin working on identifying um good locations for an airlift.
They actually did a training here last week on the, was it Saturday? Yeah, they landed right here by Dollar General. They're flying, I got them in the backyard watering the garden because the helicopter blew right over my head. I'm like, what? They landed, they were doing training at, at, and they landed in the field by Dollar General, so. There's quite a few vacant fields. We just need to, what'd it say, fifty by fifty or one hundred by hu- one hundred? Upon review of the city attorney's recommendations, I mean, if we did send the city attorney uh late on Friday, uh, we haven't got anything back yet. And so, I mean, it's, it's standard contract language, but I mean, that's fine. I mean, uh, Mr. Mr. Jones made a motion to, once the city attorney business plus, I guess, then uh proceed with any changes they recommend. You have a Mr. Jones motion? Mr. Weaver sent. All in favor? All in favor? Carry it. Four to zero. All right, so we'll uh, we'll wait for the city attorney's recommendations on the contract. Out of number four, what we've all been waiting for. Discuss, review and take any necessary action related to the G L O resident communities grant program. Yes, sir.
My name's Jordan Everhart. I'm in our big group. We are the city's engineer. I am a senior.
I am a senior planner there. I'm actually in the local government services arm, the community planning arm of of our company. We're in Waco, too, in Austin, in Texas, as you already know. I was asked to come to give a, give a brief overview of the resilient communities programs with the Texas General Land Office. Really, in short, this is, I'm just going to call it a community planning or comprehensive planning. Part of, part of my job and part of what we do on our planning, our planning arm of MRB is kind of stay on top of funding that communities can benefit from. This, this is one of those. This is kind of one of the ones that I've been preaching, at least for the last year, for several communities. My family and I, this is kind of a personal, my family and I moved down here about three years ago, here in the central Texas area. Working with smaller communities, I learned pretty quickly that budgets are tight. And the money that is available gets spent on things that we need. Clean drinking water, sewers, utilities. So there's not a whole, sometimes there's just not a lot of money left to do a lot of other things with. This kind of provides an opportunity to focus on comprehensive planning. As people continue to move to central Texas, there's development pressures coming. Comprehensive planning can help, help dictate and help guide where and how a city can grow. And, and so that's just kind of what a comprehensive plan does in short. Just a brief, an overview of this program. This was funded back in June last year. It's administered by the Texas General Land Office. There's a hundred million dollars in the fund. It is first come, first served. A community can apply for up to three hundred thousand dollars in comprehensive planning services, if you will. A lot of the things that I'm going to briefly mention are in the packets that I left for y'all. But that's anything from building codes to zoning ordinances or zoning updates. The comprehensive planning document itself, you can get into economic development, you can get into downtown revitalization, land use plans, thoroughfare plans. Really, what a comprehensive plan entails is eligible for this grant. The, the, kind of the twist or the lens that you would have to look at this through is from a hazard mitigation standpoint. So this is a community resiliency program. So when they say resiliency, it's just, for me, that's a fancy word for just disaster response, disaster mitigation. So all the components of this comprehensive plan would be required to be looked at through a hazard mitigation lens. Here in central Texas, there's, I mean, there's a myriad of different types of threats. This kind of primarily focused on funding, I'm sorry, not funding, flooding. And, but there's part of this process through the hazard mitigation mitigation, risk assessment, risk analysis that we do, that we get over. So part of the comp plan, or the, most of the comp plan elements would actually adhere towards how do they benefit the resiliency of the community, the mitigation of the different hazards that are identified. So this is a first come, first served grant program. One of the things that I wanted to get into is eligibility. One of the things that we try to do to the best that we can is let the community know if you're eligible or not. That's like the first thing we want to try to do. Bartlet's a little unique in a sense that y'all sit in two counties. So the GLOs identify what they call an MID district or most impacted distressed counties, and that was on the map up here earlier. These are counties that have been impacted by disasters in the past, primarily flooding. Bell County is not one of those districts, or not one of those counties. Williamson County is. In my correspondence with, with Wendy Cooper at the General Land Office, a grant application would have to be submitted in order to find out if the City of Bartlet is eligible. There's a lot of things that go on, I guess, behind the scenes on their end. When application is submitted, they're looking at population, they're looking at mint income, they're looking at several, several different items like that. The fact that Bartlet's half and half, Wendy or the GLO is not able to give me a direct answer. She says we'll have to apply in order to determine if you'll be eligible. So I, I just, I did want to disclose that. This is that y'all aren't the only city in Texas is that way, but that's just, that's just something that would have to happen in order to find out if we're eligible. You'd have to apply, whereas most cities would, would know if they're eligible. They said entirely within those midterms.
So this is a, I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, 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 I, I was just making sure I kind of hit all the high points on the notes, on my notes. I believe I covered it here. Yeah, I'm open to have to answer any questions. Capital improvements Plan is also a part of.
Yeah, I got an email today, and I guess it's Don Buckingham that's awarded the land.
Okay, GLO.
GLO. So they awarded a whole bunch of stuff today.
So I guess a quick summary, it's up to three hundred thousand dollars. This is a zero percent grant match, one hundred percent grant funded. Like we like to say around here, those are cheap. Might as well apply and, and see if we're eligible regardless of the county distinction. The other piece of it is, again, maximum three hundred thousand. We've talked about the comprehensive plan before and how important it is to help facilitate the growth that's coming our way. And that growth is going to be on the city's terms, not vice versa. And the comprehensive plan and the requisite, requisite zoning or subsequent zoning updates as part of the comprehensive plan are the critical piece of it. So one question would be, could the grant be used to do the comprehensive plan component and the zoning amendments that come afterwards as a result of the comprehensive plan? Or were those?
Not the amendments, but it would be for the, you could have a zoning rewrite. So basically, yeah, so it would, it would be a zoning rewrite. You could go through that whole zoning process and things like you were talking about earlier.
I'll just get a mention.
Could be, could be addressed. Yeah, so there's, there's quite a few. So another comprehensive planning category, land use plan, zoning update, capital improvements plan, I think a lot of those are part of that. There are separate breakout categories you could do if you wanted to, building codes is one of those. I think the other one I saw specifically was, yeah, flood damage prevention ordinances. So there are different categories and things you can apply for here. The comprehensive planning does cover water.
Awesome. What's the application rate after time and I'll be there with a full time?
Based on what we've, I guess, heard from other communities, it hasn't been super fast. I couldn't give you a definite answer. I would give you a range of three to, three to four months, you might know something. Yeah, I, I, yeah, I wish I could.
That's fairly quick, come on, man.
At least consider it.
We're on grants from three years ago still.
I was on the phone with a person I worked with, a community just southeast, or southeast of Austin, like, because it's, it's just seven months ago.
Better to have it in than not at all.
Yeah, you got to start somewhere. Like, okay, so the comprehensive plan, you have to hear that, you've probably been hearing that for months now. That book that Joseph found propping up the old copy machine in the old office in there before we leveled the floors? That was from two thousand five. That was the two thousand five to two, two thousand twenty-five comprehensive plans. We're in twenty twenty-three. We're getting to the near, to the near end of what, you know, the suggestion for that. And now, everything that for those first twenty, you know, twenty, eighteen years, seventeen years, that book said they're collecting dust, and now we've knocked the dust off of it. But every bit of that that we should have been doing seventeen years ago, we're doing now. And so we got to start like thinking about, you know, what's the next steps in the future? So this is a very good timing because we're coming to the end of our current comprehensive plan. And you have to have that comprehensive plan in place to get a lot of grants. To, to even be considered, you have to have a current comprehensive plan in place. And so, and they're very expensive, you know, to be one. So if you have free, free government money here.
Up to three hundred thousand.
Up to three hundred G's to pay for it. Hey, why not, right?
One, I, one of the things I kind of, I kind of harp on is, is I guess the paper trail, and that's, that's what kind of what a comp plan does. It allows you to put your flag in the ground, so to speak. And then anything that stems off of that, you can always say, hey, we've done our community engagement. This is what the community's saying to the comp plan. And then you can always, always tie future funding back to, back to that.
Yeah. So.
I, I do have a couple of, a few quick questions I'd like to.
One is would a water, wastewater, or street, any of those infrastructure-based master plans be eligible for incorporation into the comprehensive plan? Or is it more so land use, economic development?
So a capital, a capital improvements plan is is required to be a part of this. So if.
I'm right here in this email I got just this morning, it's kind of funny, perfect timing. The City of Katy administrators receiving this one point one three million dollar check for mitigation project aimed at improving water supply and fire protection in the City of Katy, from the GLO, from Don.
So there's, there are, yeah, there are different categories of the actual program that you can apply for. Capital improvements Plan is required. I can double check to see if the actual, I don't feel like the actual wastewater, like an assessment or a master plan is going to be part of it. It can be part of your comprehensive plan or, or vision in the future, but I, I know a capital improvements plan, it's like a double check. I'll double check on that, the master plan.
It's a good head start. And the thought, the thought behind that question is trying to get as much as you can with this grant funding. The pieces were not eligible for, or that are not going to be covered by funding, then we work, how do we add those pieces behind it or simultaneously with it? The, the other question I had was related to what is, what a typical comprehensive plan update or rewrite looks like. You mentioned community engagement.
Yes.
That is like the key piece of it. So you have lots of public workshops, public engagement, folks come in and you get their input on what they would like to see in terms of the city's future vision and growth. And so, like you mentioned earlier, when we talk about these variance hearings, what's, what would be evaluated at that time is, it would be noted there's a lot of properties in town that meet certain criteria or, or properties, I guess, if you will. And how do you address those? Part of comprehensive planning discussion, re-ride the zoning, the zoning re-ride would be part of that. So it's going to take some time, but if you're looking for a long-term solution, that's it.
Yeah, there, it was a twenty-four month timeline, so should the city be awarded, then you've got twenty-four months to get it all done. As far as the zoning goes, just what that would look like for, for the comprehensive plan process to start. It's usually kicked off with a lot of public engagement, and then it's sprinkling throughout some point towards the end of that comprehensive planning process. Totally at the end, your zoning rewrite kind of kicks in once a land use plan, the land use map has been established. Once that land use map's established, then you start getting into the nitty gritty of how do we want to use these specific land uses? How do we cut them up into zones and what, and what does that look like? That has its own separate public involvement, public engagement track. So it's, it's parallel to the comprehensive planning, but it's kind of towards the last quarter of it. So there's a little bit of overlap, but it doesn't have to be overlap, but you have twenty-four months when you're trying to keep things moving and keep momentum going. So if there's, that's its own separate track or engagement, because it's, you didn't get into a lot more details and there's a lot more education that has to come along with it. The community is dictating and, and recommending what they want to see in zone, and also, they also need to understand what's, what, what zoning means and what the outcomes and consequences of, of it requires, that's all. So it's, it's a pretty, that's a pretty intense, it's a pretty intense process.
I, I would recommend that city council approve moving forward with an application for the GLO Resilience Communities Grant. We can provide follow-up. What would be an appropriate follow-up, not for a month from now, to bring the formal application back to council for approval? Prior to submission or?
So.
To be determined?
Yeah, I guess I just wanted to kind of state one more thing here regarding this procurement. I had Janet and Brock kind of put their heads together. Also work with the, with Thompson and Janet, she is our local government services as well. And if our, our grant, grant.
Janet's been shaking that money tree for a few. She's the one who's been finding a lot in these grant opportunities that we've been pursuing.
As far as, as far as procurement goes, procuring an administrator, a great administrator and a grant rider would be kind of one of the first steps so that throughout this process, you want to make sure you're following their whole grant termality. Don't want, don't want to slip up on that. So the, the goal of them is make sure we're always, we're always procuring. So.
Is Langford or?
Langford is, is a pretty prominent grant administrator in the region.
I think they've written, I think, I think they've written.
Yeah, but, but they have to be distinct, right? The grant administrator can't be the grant rider, you have to have two separate.
The grant administrator can be the grant rider. The grant administrator can't do the work or can't. You can't be the grant administrator. You can administer and perform comprehensive planning work, to say, that makes sense.
Yeah.
Yes, you can't do that. You can administer and write the grant. And then, so y'all can procure for an administrator and a grant rider. They can do around the same, or then later, you know, if it's going to be, if you get awarded, then you can procure for a
Planning.
A planning or consultant or whoever to come in and, and you've, to bid on doing it, to do it for.
And those are typically like Hapton Associates or Freezing Nipples or bigger firms. That's good. A grant administrator for third party. I mean, what did we learn with these grants? Very, very time intensive, lots of red teddy, lots of things that we, we take care of.
Lots. Well, cool, so we, we just need a motion to proceed on with the application process? Is that what we need? Any other questions for Mr. Jordan? Mr. Weaver's made a motion.
I'll see.
Shelton Biermer has seconded. All in favor? Carry's four to zero. Jordan, thank you, buddy. Appreciate you coming in and explaining all that to us. Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Shelton's seconding. Out of number five, discuss, review, take any necessary action related to a interlocal agreement with Bell County Animal Shelter. Touched on this one last month.
This one just contains the updated, the removal of only city staff can. It says designated city staff may deliver and the county will receive animal shelter. Previously, it said that city staff and, and citizens could take it. But that's been removed. That was the only other piece of it. And any other thoughts on it? Any other thoughts, questions?
Thank you.
Inter, inter, interlocal agreement with the I O A agreement.
Mr. Weaver made a motion? Please second it. Mr. Weaver made a motion. Mr. Jones has seconded that motion. All in favor? Kerry's forty zero. Got any fill-in today?
We can look at it after them.
Item number six, discuss review, taking any necessary action related to creating an interview committee for city administrator recruitment. So as y'all remember, Mr. Joseph is moving on. Last day, July fourteenth, through the city of Bartlett. And so, um, for our ordinance, we can't hold interviews until the twenties, June twenty-seventh. We posted the job and we had to wait, uh.
Fourteen days.
Fourteen days before we could start the interview process. So that would be later this week, we can start holding interviews. We've got, we've got a, a stack of candidates' resumes and, um, we need to start going through them. So we need, uh, interview committee to start weeding through those candidates, narrowing it down before we bring it to council for, uh, for action. And so, I would recommend two council plus mayor. You get free counsel, then you have an illegal meeting. So two council plus mayor. And anybody else that want in, involved in it. So y'all decide who? And who you want on, uh, if, if you want anybody else involved. Joseph can be involved or he can sit in back, just take notes, whatever. Give his guidance or if he doesn't have to be involved, doesn't matter. So it's up to you guys. Uh, if the, the interviews will probably take place in the afternoons. So if, uh, you know, you'd have to be available for the interviews, obviously. Uh, unless y'all wanna go like ten o'clock at Applebee's. I mean, I've been, I've been to previous, maybe that's where you all interviews, so. Now, if we could do, uh, you know, in the afternoons, you know, four to seven P M in that range, would be best for me. So I can go to work every day and then get new products. I mean, and, and that, that might work out, you know, for other candidates too because most likely they're gonna have a job and they're working, you know, and nobody, you know, to take off too early.
Say seven P M?
Sorry?
Seven P M?
I'd say you're probably in that, you know, four to seven P M range, five to seven P M range. Somewhere in that range. So. No, nothing. We'll have the interviews, uh, most likely in here. That's how we do the last. But, uh. We just needed, we just needed two council members. And if y'all want me involved, I guess, like. Mr. Weaver is available, so.
Now, I'm really good, that's just my spirit.
Mr. Weaver. Shelton, do you wanna, you wanna do it or Gail, did you wanna do it? Either one of y'all? You could ask tough questions. Okay, you could do, uh, Philip and Shelton with an ultimate of, of Gail. He knows the positions.
Right.
I agree.
I, I could definitely make myself available. Um, if council were to screen an interview and identify maybe a top two or three candidate pool. And then I can be part of the next round where I can be made available for any questions, um, that that person may want, just for clarification. Um, I would like, my goal, my hope is that, uh, at least in the initial interview process, for me to not be involved because I want this to be, this needs to be a council decision to make and who's sitting in this chair and, uh, not based off of my input, if you will. So I want you guys to feel confident and comfortable with the decision you guys make. But of course, I'll make myself available to answer any questions to a potential top candidate or council, indoor council, to help assist in the process.
So, didn't we have a motion? Y'all make a motion?
I'll make a motion if, uh, Mr. Weaver and Shelton Biermer, if to the council.
Mr. Jones has made a motion for Mr. Weaver and Mr. Shelton with ultimates of the other candidate, of other council members. With Jesse Luna second. All in favor? Kerry's forty zero. All right. Item number seven, discuss review, taking necessary action related to the public works director superintendent position. This is something I asked Joseph to put on here again. Uh, we have a, a couple of positions frozen in the city, uh, here recently. And, uh, the more and more, um, it's just become more and more, uh, clear that this is a position that the city is lacking, uh, in the field. So I asked Joseph to put this on here again for us to, uh, consider adding this position to our, our board. And, um, so we can go ahead and post the job and the qualifications on the T O M L website so we can get some resumes in. Be over water, wastewater, streets, grounds, and electric departments. Basically a superintendent position, general superintendent, whatever you wanna call him, director, whatever you wanna call him. Because Joseph is leaving us. I was gonna keep saying that. Um, the next person that, you know, gets Joseph's seat won't be as hands-on out in the field as Joseph has been. Joseph's worn a lot of hats and he's carried a lot of job titles. So we're gonna need somebody out in the streets to, uh, to help assist those things along. Probably.
Um, so a few more bullet points with it are the reason that it's listed as public works director slash superintendent is denotes two separate things, if you will. Public works director is more of a high-level administrative. A public works director would oversee all public works. Like Mayor mentioned, water, wastewater, electric, streets, parks and recreation, the whole nine. Um, be very, very valuable, very valuable. Uh, a superintendent would be more so, um, well, a public works director typically indicates either a bachelor's degree or some sort of level of educational attainment similar to that. A public work superintendent is more construction and field-oriented, if you will. That person's more likely to be a licensed operator with, uh, T C Q, water, wastewater, which is something we have to have on staff. Um, both positions, we looked at some, uh, what'd you call it? Salary statistics, you know, pay data with, with cities of five thousand population or less. And they were actually pretty comparable in terms of what the pay ranges were for them. Um, so that would be a component of this conversation. What would the posted range be? Um, what exactly job description are we looking for in it? You know, are you, do you want to have a requirement to have the license? Or do you wanna make it a preferred qualification? That's a piece of it. And then also, um, we did freeze a few positions. We have currently, I believe it was, uh, two frozen, if I'm not mistaken. And both of them were in the water wastewater department. So that would be the common, combining of those two vacancies for this one vacancy, one potential vacancy. Um, another piece of the equation, that's all.
The job works to be broad enough to say if you don't have those licenses, would the, now the candidate would be given within a certain period of time, do you have those licenses?
You can mandate that. Right. You could do that. Um, really where this person would, would really, really benefit is being out in the field, lining the guys out every day, the electric guys and the public works guys. But primarily, they'd be out in the field with, with the water wastewater guys. They'd be able to operate a backup, manage your work orders, um, things of that nature. Uh, things that, like Mayor mentioned, are, are missing. A, a pretty key missing point that we have in our current operations. Definitely help facilitate a lot of things, a lot of projects. Do we want, we, we can put together a job description and either bring it back to discussion, post it? Um, thoughts?
I like it. So. Mr. P W made a motion?
Yeah, second.
Jesse Luna seconded. The requirements. Uh, Jesse seconded, all in favor? Kerry's forty zero. Thank y'all, y'all be careful. That's what they're waiting for. Superintendent position. All right, number eight. Discuss review, taking necessary action related to the recruitment and hiring of posted vacant positions. Sorry, I'm, let's see. Thanks, Chief. Discuss review and taking necessary action related to the recruitment and hiring of posted vacant positions.
These are currently the posted vacancies pending. So there's currently two budgeted vacancies. One is my position pending, you know, was pending vacancy plus a, uh, a police officer position. Um, as you know, Sergeant Hernandez moved on to, uh, a different agency. So there's a vacancy in that department. And I believe the reserve police officers. Chief, you wanna mention on that one? The reserve police officer? The thought process behind this agenda item is basically allowing the, uh, whoever the new city administrator is, is, is a couple of changes that have, that are, earn the works here. One is offloading the city secretary title to it. That's why Ms. Brenda's been at the meetings recently. Um, there's a, one question that we have to go through, city attorney is can we, with council approval, transfer the city secretary title to an existing staff member, being Ms. Brenda? Or do we have to tag her with the interim city secretary title and then post it, uh, for maybe internal applicants or external applicants? Have you go through a more formal process? We're gonna work on that. But point being is that, that's why it's just posted as city administrator work to offload that. Very, very similar to the public works superintendent position. You know, that's a hat to be worn, um, hopefully by somebody else moving forward. The thought process with this one here is letting, you know, postponing those hirings or, or any significant action outside of the city administrator position to allow the city adminis, the new city administrator to come in, do an evaluation of the existing city staff and, uh, and operations and have the ability to hire to what they deem in collaboration with mayor and the city council to be the most efficient hiring for the operations of the city. And, and to have a, a piece of the conversation of who that person is because they're gonna be the ones that are gonna have to work with these people every single day and coordinate with them on high-level conversations every day. And ultimately be accountable to city council every day. So that, that was the, one of the main reasons for this agenda item. Any questions? Yeah, we're not that far away. I mean, a couple of weeks, you know, maybe a month. Um, so this isn't like a six or eight month thing here, so. We hope not, yeah. We haven't met with any applicants yet, but we hope that, we, we have some big candidates. But. And we do also have a vacancy with the animal control code, code compliance position. That is another one being vacant. It just hasn't been posted yet really for this, this purpose that we're discussing right now. So the, uh, the recommendation would be to freeze any hiring of any vacant positions, potentially even including this, uh, public works director superintendent position previously discussed until the city administrator position is filled. Um, doesn't necessarily mean that person has to be here day one. Um, if the person's selected and then whatever time it takes for them to actually get into office, once the person's selected, then you can kind of unfreeze everything and then continue with the process to keep the ball moving. So hopefully that's, the intent is for that to be very, very short freeze. For the administrator position? I'm not sure on the other ones, but the administrator position, uh, yes, there, there are a handful of applications already and, and considering. Yeah, the other ones, uh, these are the only ones that have been posted, that you've seen right there. Those are the only ones posted. This superintendent position, uh, public works director hasn't been posted yet. And it honestly, the, uh, I could see that the city administrator is hired well before that position is, and we, we hope, yeah. The, the job description can be developed. Everything else can be worked out and essentially posted. We can go ahead and start to get some resumes coming in, hopefully, some qualified candidates. Any comments? Yes, sir?
Yes, uh, as, as a council, you have the right to do that. Um, to freeze all, all current open positions. Except for the, obviously, the city administrator's gotta be filled. The, uh, as a, as a council, you have the, the right. I mean, we're right here at a change of a city administrator. We're right here at, at the end of a, uh, about to get a budget, uh, audit back, sorry. And we're right at budget at the same time. And so, um, you do have the right. I understand what Chief's asking for is a replacement officer for, you know, the one that was lost because these, um, you know, there's rumors that another one would be leaving. I don't think we've seen anything in writing yet on that, but, that I know of. So.
So when that happens, I mean, it'd be just these three gentlemen right here running patrol, so. That, I mean, can always unfreeze the position for hiring, can always get resumes in. We just, you know, put them in a file and then whenever a new administrator's in office, then we just say, okay, these are the positions that we can fill, you know, what are your thoughts? Just thoughts. Thoughts, questions, city council?
Mr. McCarthy, have others for office?
Yes.
Yes, sir. That's, that's supposed to run it. Have you had the resumes yet, Chief?
I haven't taken them.
No. You can see graders also. Freeze the hiring of those positions. Freeze the hiring of vacant positions. The applications, you know, the the job postings can be out there, you can get resumes in. And I'd say hopefully we're, you know, about a month away from having a administrator. And so this wouldn't be like November, December, it'd be more like right around the corner, even. Late July, August.
We're going to freeze one month from the first of the next council meeting.
Okay. That's just our recommendation, so we just need the council absolutely to disapprove of. Sheldon Gilmore made a motion, Jesse Luna seconded, all in favor. That's very four zero. Discuss, item number nine, discuss review and take any necessary action related to poll attachment agreement policy. Jesse.
Okay, this poll attachment agreement policy. We've got a fiber internet company that's really, really look rather swiftly about bringing their fiber internet to the citizen department. And pretty much the only thing they're lacking in order to start bringing us a contract is the poll attachment agreement.
Yes, so what what you'll see in your packet, it's got a big yellow highlight at the top of the page, it's up there, that's the first page it's on. That's just a draft template from the Texas Municipal, on what they call a, they call it a poll attachment license. Right, a poll co-location attachment license, basically who do we receive, Encore, B E C, A T and T, anybody that has a poll contact on the city's utility polls, they need to be paying a license fee, if you will. This agreement recommends, or it says twenty dollars per per contact, per poll, per year. But what we've sort of heard is industry standard, at least in our region, is ten dollars per poll, per year, per attachment. It's up there. And and the reason is. Well, the the reason there is a company that's interested in expanding high speed internet to the city, but in order for them to do a feasibility study, they need to know what the poll contact charge would be in order to accurately price with that proxy, so. We don't quite have that answer yet, which is why we're talking about it here, but having this in place as a policy allows not just this high speed internet provider, but any other purveyor to come in, we have an existing agreement that we can share with them as a standard, as a system.
That's just what we've been charged from the ones that we paid, because there are poles in town that we pay attachments on, that we have our utilities on. And that's ten, it's the ten bucks per pole annually, or ten bucks per year is what we're paying. Now, we can set our fees, what we charge people, whatever, but at the same time, it's like the higher you charge, the more their services to the customer, or the higher you charge, do they come to bother you, you know, those kind of things, so. Yeah. Where do, like, I mean, if you go to Gerald or Florence or one of those cities, you know, our size is maybe even bigger. That's all co-op poles. What do you think for getting Adam Brady? Do you have any contacts from Brady? Mr. Weaver, you still have any contacts from Brady?
Brady City, um, so one thing, uh, great, this is just the template that was provided. You know, I just have to go through this more in depth and make any obvious adjustments, the things that don't apply to the general law cities or to the city department, and then beyond that, it still has to go to city attorney for additional review. And it even mentions it here, you know, it needs to be carefully by the city attorney for conformity with existing city ordinances. But if there's one thing that we take away, maybe two things that we take away from this agenda item, it's to move forward with the poll attachment agreement policy plus determining what the fee is for that, because that's information that can be shared with any additional providers that they can start, you know, crunching some feasibility numbers on providing their service to citizens in town. Those would be two things. Any thoughts, questions, concerns? For a long time. Basically, it could make the head of wrong. It's just kind of what's in place already. But this would. You're going to pay the new fee.
Well, this would definitely like be found in. But you could do, uh. You could do, uh, we could go out and maybe try to gather some information from other cities who are comparable in size on their own utility, see what their poll attachment agreements look like, or we could just stab a fee to it, you know. We're, we've been charged ten. Sheldon's saying, you know, he's been around the industry all of his adult life and all his inside. And, you know, he's seen him up to twenty five bucks a poll now. I doubt you'll get that too from a fiber internet provider, but.
It's section five point two, page sixteen of that template document in your packet there. So there's, it says here licensee shall pay the city annually two hundred and fifty dollars per network node is one fee. Subsequent years. Then five point two is the attachment on service poll fee, this is where it says licensee shall pay the city annually twenty dollars for each network node permitted to be co-located on service poll in accordance with that charter. This one here says twenty dollars per poll annually. This is, this is just Texas municipally, it's just a template document.
So this is pretty average across Texas.
Presumably, twenty dollars.
What is a network node? It's a two hundred and fifty dollar, or what was it, two hundred dollars annually, or?
I need to look in an exact definition of what a node is, it's just like a like an asset, you know, like a.
License permit, I guess, for the city, or?
They usually have a kind of equipment, and there's a historic district in here, which is good. Uh, let's see, micro, macro, applications. Right, so equipment associated with wireless communications, a radio transceiver, antenna, battery only backup power supply and comparable equipment. Coags or fiber optic cable that is immediately adjacent to and directly associated with a particular co-location. And is, but, and B does not include an electric generator, a pole or a macro tower. This is another reason why it's good to have something like this that defines what all of these categories are. So again, this is to just start the conversation, get familiar with the concept of a poll attachment agreement as a policy. Plus identifying a potential price point that we can communicate to folks who are interested in attaching equipment to either city utility poles or city, really be city utility poles.
We're going to get some good fiber, whatever, optics, whatever, and we'll be seeing on post like.
Exactly, yeah, so, so one other thing to keep in mind is if you price yourself out of the market, you know, other cities can charge a higher price point because they're a high demand market. People, people who are in demand for service and their, and their models, their feasibility models are going to show that, yeah, we can pay a twenty five dollar poll attachment because we're going to get the revenues back by the customer base alone. Exactly, so for us, we're still small enough that maybe twenty, twenty dollars might be pushing it, maybe fifteen at least to start, and then that can always be amended down the road, but you don't want to price, like, again, you just don't want to price yourself out of an opportunity. You could always do, and again, we'll check this with city attorney, but maybe you do
First three years.
First three years, exactly.
Twelve fifteen and then up to fifteen after that, you know.
Like a graduated.
But it's good stuff, I mean, because I mean, it's, it's like, I mean, it's you got a fiber internet running down an alleyway, they're going to hit a lot of poles. You got to run it through your entire city, they're going to hit a lot of poles. Exactly, you put that right back into replacing poles, replacing lines. It's good, it's a good little revenue for.
It's not on the agenda, but I can give you an update.
So what do we want to do on this, do we want to reach out to some other cities comparable size and figure something out, or we want to start, like at a low, get them in here and then, you know, hit them with the three, five, three or five year contract and then.
So maybe do some market research, do we want to bring this back to the next council meeting?
That's a good question, let me, let me deep dive into this one and let me make sure I answer that forty on the next poll.
The question was on underground, so what if they don't do a poll contact, but they want to do underground fiber, does it still apply? And if so, how does, I'm going to, I'll follow up on that.
Unless it's in the new subdivision, when it's all done from the get go. Okay, so we're going to do some market research on this, no action tonight, right? We'll do a little research, bring it back, hopefully next council meeting. Discuss, item number ten, discuss review, take any necessary action related to amending fiscal year twenty twenty four budget calendar.
This is just a follow up from our workshop conversation, this is the opportunity to have official action on it, this is also in your packet. So on May fifteenth, we had our strategic planning workshop. Last Monday, we had our first budget workshop, tonight, we'll set times and dates for budget workshops two and three. If you recall, we basically were in favor of the August twenty eighth timeline, which is the next page in your packet here. Which means August twenty eighth is the meeting where the budget and the tax rate is adopted, this allows the city to do a couple of things. But mainly sticker, stick to a tighter timeline, plus meet county tax assessor deadlines required for their notices. So this gets this out of the way a lot faster. Following that August eighth, August twenty eighth timeline, recommend having a budget, second budget workshop on Friday, June thirtieth, that's this Friday. Ideally, this would have been a Thursday, Friday workshop, but in order for me to post the seventy two hour notice, I would have had to post Thursdays today by six, so that that really only leaves Friday as the next earliest date to have a workshop.
This Friday, with as much a workshop?
This Friday, right, now, these are, these are just proposals, these can be changed, this is why we're talking about it. So it would be Friday, and that workshop, we could talk about revenues, right, we could talk about revenue projections for general fund and utilities, we can review that. The next set of budget workshops would be next Thursday and next Friday, those would be, that would be the two day ones, that's the one where we can talk about expenditures, we can deep dive. Usually, day one, we talk about general fund departments and their expenditures, day two, we talk about utility fund departments and their expenditures. Then after that, we'd have a regular council meeting on the tenth, if any actions needed as a result of those workshops. Anything in red is a, is a firm deadline, so Tuesday, the twenty fifth is when the certified property values are due from both county appraisal districts. So you can't really solidify a budget until you get that that information back from the appraisal district. So that's why I included in there a proposed budget workshop four, I just put it as a two day, that's Wednesday, July twenty sixth, and Thursday, Thursday, July twenty seventh. Because if we're going to stick to the August twenty eighth timeline, the proposed budget has to be posted to the website before the thirtieth day the budget is adopted, and that is, that thirty one day is Friday, July twentieth, the proposed budget has to be posted to the website by that date. And then once you follow that, then you're on track on the regular meeting for August fourteenth to, to set that tax rate not to exceed. And then Monday, August twenty eighth is when you have your adoption proceedings for the budget and tax rate. And this is just implementing the feedback from the last workshop, want to open it up for further discussion, thoughts, questions, concerns. Want to open it up for further discussion, thoughts, questions, concerns, availability. One other thing to keep in mind is, as a workshop, we're not required to have forums, so if you can't make a workshop, that's okay. Um, I can still separate time, one-on-ones or two-on-ones, and we can go over them as needed. Just the, the whole impetus behind this is getting as much done before my last day that we can. And then hopefully by that point, it's just a cruise control until the new person is, is in, and we're just crunching in maybe one or two other outstanding numbers. Changed my name. 14th is my last day. That's either going to be the new guy, or, uh, I could try and make it those nights. It's going to be a tough one, it's going to be a tough one. An alternate would be, I thought about maybe doing it, uh, Thursday and Friday, the 13th and the 14th. But again, you can't really do much until you receive the certified property values back by the 25th. So, one other option that could be done is, you know, by the, by the 14th, we post a proposed budget to the website. And then maybe that weekend, the Saturday or Sunday of July 29th, 30th, that's workshop four, and I could, I could make a weekend one. And, uh, then you just update the, the website with the budget that says as amended on a certain date. So posted this date, as amended this date. And that should be sufficient to satisfy that criteria. Just didn't know how open people were to meeting on the weekend. And if the new person would be in, in place. So we can make, uh, we can strike those Wednesday and Thursday dates, and just have a tentative budget workshop for two-day deal to be determined at a later time and date. Depending on how far we get on that, I'm talking about 26, 27, yes, sir? Those can be, those dates can be struck, but the concept of a budget workshop for can be earmarked as a to-be-determined time and date. So for everybody to deal with that, it can be, uh, approve. Well, if you do the, uh, if you approve the calendar, then I can post all those pretty straightforward. Because this has to be included in the budget document. It can just be, uh, a motion to approve the amended fiscal year 24 budget calendar as proposed. Mr. Weaver's made a motion. Sheldon Gilmore has signed it. All in favor? Item number 11, discuss review, take any necessary action related to adding an AARP Senior Community Service Employment Program member to City Hall operations. So some of y'all know, we do, are, we are partnered with AARP, they provide, uh, labor free to the city, uh, doesn't charge us anything for it. And we've been using, utilizing, uh, Mr. A.P. Mitchell over at the public library, county library, for quite a while now, a couple, about six months, if not longer. And he's, uh, he's been very successful, and he's, he's been a rock star. And AARP reached out to the city about a week, even a half ago. And they've got another candidate for us, if, uh, if we're willing, or if we have the need for one. And we've, uh, are going to have a sit-down with the person tomorrow afternoon, I believe. So the, it's AARP is the, the parent organization, but the program itself is called Senior Community Service Employment Program. And this is in your package as well, you can see it in there. Um, and basically, there's a couple of things that we have to do in order to onboard this new person. One is assign them a title. And two, more importantly, is assign them very specific duties and responsibilities. It says very clearly there, other duties as assigned is prohibited. We can't just throw a blanket term out there, you know, and, and have them out there mowing grass one day and then coming in here. Whatever we tell you to do. Exactly. So one thing, one place that I'd recommend for this, this applicant, really, and this person's already been recommended to us, is, uh, they previously were in this program with, I believe it was Child Protective Services. So they have administrative, um, office administration experience. Plus, if you're working for CPS, that, that would generally indicate that you have a degree of professionalism and, and discreet. You can handle sensitive information. So with that being said, um, we would recommend that this person be allocated to City Hall. And one of the duties would be to, uh, be the primary point of contact at the utility billing counter. So they would be, they would just take payments, that'd be one thought. Another one is they are the ones, um, answering the phone, the first person to answer the phones, and coordinating as needed. Another thought would be to allow this person to work on organizing cemetery duties and responsibilities, like cemetery deeds, and getting all those files in order, going into the vault, pulling those files, and doing, uh, organization of those items. Doing electronic filing, e-filing of boxes upstairs, helping get upstairs organized as a record retention room. That's, that's a huge need right now. And then any other general office to do. I believe it's 18 an hour? 18 hour, we, no, I'm not, we have to work within those constraints. But 18 hours of an extra set of hands can go a long way, uh, with that one person, and also expanding the capabilities of our current staff, and not letting them be, uh, pulled in a million different directions all the time. And we'll find out more about this applicant-specific, um, constraints tomorrow. But we wanted to at least get a sense of title and specific duties that we can bring to the conversation tomorrow. Any thoughts, questions, concerns on anything proposed for this volunteer? Now, this person does do, um, cash handling. There, there are certain policies in place that would be very, very strict. This person would never be left alone in that room, in the payment processing room. They wouldn't have access, they wouldn't have a key to the vault, for that way. Uh, there are cameras all throughout that room, and there is accounting done every time the registers are opened, and every time the registers are closed. And so you can't leave until everything's accounted for properly on the cash receipt. Right, exactly, exactly. So, um, there is oversight, multiple levels of it. Just wanted to make that, make that comment. That's right, that's right. Were, were there any, uh, did you, Ms. Alice or Ms. Rose have any thoughts, questions, ideas, um, potential? Any other duties that we didn't mention here that would be good for this person? Clearing the answering machine?
Yeah. The answering machine is always full. Go up there. They work there. Eight-five every day. Feel free to walk in. Doors unlocked.
Call me, don't tell me about it, just go in.
I would recommend a motion to approve, to move forward with, um, you can either appoint somebody to develop this, you can appoint a committee. You can have this be brought back for council approval after the meeting tomorrow. Ideally, after the meeting tomorrow, we can get this person to work as quickly as possible. I know we have the overarching agreement with AARP. I'll, I'll double-check that, I'll double-check that. No, sir, no, sir. Because this is not related to a posted vacant position of the city. This is just, uh, basically. Let's take a motion.
The moves that we pursue it. Gilmore has made a motion. Gail Jones has seconded it. Boy, they're on fire now, guys. All in favor? Carry 4-0. All right, at this time, we will go into executive session. In accordance with Texas Government Code, section 551, dot 001, city council will recess in the executive session to discuss the following. Item number 12, 551 dot 074, deliberate the appointment, employment, and evaluation compensation reassignment duties discipline, and or dismissal of a public employer officer regarding chief of police. We'll go into the executive session at 9:04. Chief of Police, set at 9:04. So we're going to talk about this. Uh, let me know if you want me back there, I'll stay out here first, to give you the opportunity. I'll stay out here first to give him the opportunity.
All right, y'all ready? Did the microphone back on? All right, we'll reconvene at 9:40 PM. Reconvene in open session, 9:40 PM. I don't know if you take action, if any, on any matters discussed in executive session, which was deliberate disappointment, employment, evaluation, compensation, reassignment duties, discipline, and/or dismissal of a public employee or officer regarding chief of police.
Oh, actually, we need to do some things that we...
Yeah, you can do that. All right, so the show has been a little more ready to motion. Philip Weaver seconded. All in favor of that? That carries forward to here. All right, any future agenda items, folks?
The minutes I have, there were... Anything on the variance hearing? Was there any future action on that?
We need to consult with city attorney on those size lots and figure out how we... What's their happy spot that we do?
Yeah, the small ones. Are we bringing back the resilient communities grant program?
That's the GLO?
Yes. Is that dependent on what the procurement timeline looks like?
I think we're going to do the application, correct?
Yeah.
I think you have to procure the grant admin first and then we can...
Yeah. So if the motion was made, you get past 40 years.
Now, I wanted to be real clear, if it was... Okay, why are they going to do the application?
I would recommend, like, Langford do the application, that way... Well, we would... They'll help us, they'll help provide some feedback on what we have to do to apply or to do the procurement. But we have to be the ones to do the procurement first, go through the process. And then, once the grant admin is determined, then at that point, the grant admin takes charge and they really help on this stuff.
Any follow-up on the city administrator item or interview committee, public works director superintendent item?
There's not a set of time for the committee to get together and review the existing so it can set up interviews if we need to.
That can be... That just had to be an agenda item or that can just be... No, it's just... We can start on as early as the 27th, I believe, tomorrow. Tomorrow. It'll probably be like Wednesday, Thursday, you can start.
I'll be out of town.
Unacceptable.
Well, I'll be back Thursday after that.
Okay. Okay, well, if there aren't any future agenda items explicit after this meeting, it suits to say after the fact we can just add something at a later point.
Do we need to call Vicki for the final motion or does somebody stand in for her? Do that last motion?
Go for it. You show me after.
Oh, Sheldon made the motion. Sheldon made the motion, we'll give Gail Jones a second. We'll call the meeting at 9:44 PM.
Vicki feeling bad today?
Yeah. So she says.
Probably something else, again, too.
Sounds like I'm following the rules. I like those.
Mr. Mayor, thanks for texting everybody, but let's remind us of the...
Yeah, I forgot about it myself.
I appreciate it. Y'all know where that goes, right?